It works, I tried it. My mind works.
All right, I'm going to play a motion to call to order public board meetings for tonight. Can you please take the roll call? Oh, actually, no, do the pledge allegiance first. Asha, if you can note the roll call, the only person not missing is Bill, but I think Bill's on Zoom. So we got everybody.
Well, we have a vacancy though while we're going to work.
Well, we're going to, Bob's not here, so in the meantime, I'm going to be serving for this particular board meeting. While we're taking care of that. All right? We did not have any executive session announcements, so there was no executive session there. We're going to go to public comment now. I'm going to make a difference here, I'm going to actually read the rules of what we're going to do for public comment. Because I need to make sure we're following the policy, because we actually even discussed that prior to this meeting. Although it wasn't voted on, and that'll be at a future date after 30 days, we are still going to follow the current policy. Current policy for public comment is on the first agenda item here, you must speak on agenda items. If anybody is here to speak on mask or the health and safety plan, that's going to be the second public comment. Not the first. The media vote things I have here are both on health and safety. So they will be after this first public comment, they will be on the second. Second thing, oh wait, no, no questions right now, we can, we can work on questions. Second thing, all right, unfortunately, we had a little bit of an issue in the last board meeting. When it comes to public comment, only current residents, district students, and district employees are allowed to give public comment. If you're going to make a public comment, you must be one of those three items. Unfortunately, I received two public comments here. Mr. Troutland, I'm sorry, you are not going to be allowed to speak at this particular meeting. Unfort- yes. I understand. I understand. And I understand, I understand the thing, they made a mistake at the last board meeting allowing someone to speak. If we allowed you to speak, we would have to allow everybody. I am a father of the family. Doesn't matter, no, your daughter is allowed to speak, your wife is allowed to speak. Unfortunately, ex-wife is allowed to speak. Unfortunately, you cannot, until you move into this district, or you are a district employee. Unfortunately, I cannot allow you to speak at this present meeting. All right, we're going to move. Does anybody have public comment on any of the agenda items? You could sue away. Mr. Corman, do you have a public comment for agenda items?
I have a question about my request for the comment. Dr. Finerty is speaking on the vaccination clinics, that falls under the health and safety plan, does it?
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, I think.
It's a report of the superintendent, and it has nothing to do with the health and safety plan.
I would argue that that does not have to do with the health and safety plan, just a report of the superintendent on possible of, of viny. You're still going to get your term, don't worry, you're going to get the second meeting. Unfortunately, two minutes should be plenty.
You never really get four, you get two for agenda items and two for non-agenda items. And again, maybe we weren't as clear as we could have been at prior meetings, but it's not a four-minute session, it's two for either one. So if you have a non-agenda item, we're pleased to hear you, you'll come at that time.
As of right now, I'm going to make the call as of no. So do we have any comments in regards to the agenda items, from anybody? If not, I'm going to remove, move on to the public agenda, public report of the superintendent. I'm not on Zoom.
Ms. Custer, from Dr. Amage, who is monitoring Zoom, there is, there's no public, request for public comments.
Perfect, we're going to move on to the reporter superintendent.
Item four, report of the superintendent, good evening, everyone. Just two quick updates, in anticipation of the FDA approval of the vaccine for children ages five to 11, and in collaboration with Giant Pharmacy, we are rescheduling the, the planned vaccination clinic. We originally planned the clinic for October, but we anticipate scheduling two dates in November, tentatively November 8th and 29th, as the new vaccines become available. We will announce the dates and times when they are finalized. My second announcement is in celebration of the Pots Grove Falcon Marching Band. The cavalcade season has started for our marching band, and I want to congratulate Ms. Seraphos, her team, and our Falcon student musicians for getting off to a great start. The Falcon Marching Band took top honors two weeks ago at Springfield, and is currently ranked first out of 32 teams in our division. The update, there was a competition in Boyertown this past Saturday, and they again took top spots. So fantastic job, if you do get a chance, please come out and see them. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Finerty. Can we move on to action items, 5.1, personnel?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve five action items, which would be 5.1 through 5.9.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Does anybody have any questions about any of the action items for personnel? With no questions, all those in favor? Any opposed? Action goes forward, undefeated. Move the action items, 6.1, business?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve six action items, business, 6.1 through 6.5.
Second. I got a first and a second for all action items under business, 6.1 to 6.5. Do I have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? 6.1 to 6.5 approved? Action items, 7.1, education?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 7.1. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 7.1, I'm sorry, to 7.3.
To 7.3 only, just to make sure?
I have a motion to approve 7.1 to 7.3. Do I have any questions? Hearing no questions, all those in favor? Any opposed? Action item approved, 7.4.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 7.4, the overnight trip to Wallops Island.
I have a motion and a second to approve the overnight trip to Wallops Island, 7.4, do we have any questions?
I have a comment. I just, the reason I didn't clump that together is this is just a wonderful trip for the, for the kids, and I'm so glad to see we're moving forward, and they're going to get to go.
I also know that he's trying to get it so that the students that missed out on it last year will, so. I don't know that's going to happen, that's why he's trying to get it, depending on how many students can go, so.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, 7.4? Any opposed? Motion carries. Committee items, 8.1, operations and facilities. It's just approval of a minute.
I'll make a motion to approve 8.1. Operation Facilities Committee. Did everybody hear my motion? I make a motion, we approve 8.1, the Operation Facilities Committee report.
It does also say that there's a report to give out, so I'm not sure who's on the Operations Facility Committee that's going to give that report, because Bob is the one that usually gave that out, I was not at the meeting. Who else was at that meeting? Chuck, can you give a little rundown of what happened?
That are on, oh, thank you. When I'm utterly unprepared, you turn the mic on. But, there was, as I recall, the roof, there was a status report on the roof, and, roof repairs, pardon?
The boilers at the high school.
Oh, yeah, the high school boilers.
And the expansion tank that we had purchased.
And a new expansion tank, thank you very much for helping me. Oh, thank you. So anyway, there was a, there was a general discussion, and that's basically a brief summary of. Oh, yeah, and there was a, last thing, how could I forget? There was a discussion on the update of the wiring that closed the place down a couple of weeks ago. And there was a, actually fairly powerful demonstra- demonstration or display of the frayed wires that we, that we saw, and Jeff Carwell had them, I guess you have them in your office, Jeff?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, anybody, if anybody wants to see an unpleasant supply, what was unpleasantly supplying power to this building, you can go to Jeff Carwell's office, and it's, it's a shocking experience. That's the end of my report.
Thanks, Chuck. Anybody have any questions in regards to that? All right, we got 8.2, report out for the Athletics and Co-Curricular Committee.
Okay, so, we spent a great deal of time on a walking trail that's being discussed, that would be connecting the middle school and Hollenbach Park with two crosswalks, and I think we have a visual, or possibly, thank you, by the way, for organizing that. So this is what it looks like, and I hope everyone can see that, it's, you can see the crosswalk areas. So basically, what it amounts to is a one-mile walking trail. And, which, I mean, walking trails, I'm never going to say no to something like that, I'm on a trail pretty much every day. The thing that we all kind of noticed was, you know, we've all driven that road, and we know, you know, the traffic can sometimes be difficult, I've come out of there with my son before, out of soccer matches and such, and it can be a little touchy. So the main concern, kind of the flavor of the meeting was safety concerns, as far as the, the students moving back and forth across the road. So that's one of the concerns that we had. This project is, it's a shared project between the township of Upper Pots Grove, Pottstown Area Regional Recreational Committee, and the district. The plan's being coordinated through Pottstown Health and Wellness Foundation and Shared Schoolyards Project. And again, the goal is to connect the schools and townships to residents to share recreational opportunities within communities. Mr. D'Renzo and Mr. Anspach have been working very tirelessly on this project with, with regard to expanding possibilities for, you know, gym classes. I'm trying to think, there were so, there was so much that we covered, would you say we'd spent probably more than a half an hour just talking about this particular project? And so more to come on that, and again, the safety for us was kind of our biggest concern, and we're going to let people who do that for a living come up with those solutions, whether it's, you know, the flashing signs, kind of like out on Charlotte Street, whatever needs to happen to make that a little bit safer, for all of us to have a good comfort level with it. Next, we talked about a district-wide community service program. And it says here, conceptually, we would like to engage all three townships, and pretty much K to 12. So it's not just high school students, it's elementary school, middle school, everyone's involved in this. Dr. Finerty shared before that, at Quakertown, they had held a large breakfast prior, they had over 700 staff and students go out into the community, and this pretty much very large-scale community service project. Did you want to speak a little bit about that, because it is, it is really neat to hear?
Thank you. So, community service is a important part of our district goals. We're looking to engender a sense of service in our students. I think community service benefits both the student and the community at large. So we're looking to do things both large and small, on a daily basis, and also in, in event setting. One of the things that, that happened when I was at Quakertown was, we had an MLK Day of Service that was fantastic. We had a group of teachers that worked, put a lot of work in to facilitate a number of different service projects, and we had a huge turnout of kids, something that was, I think, again, very good for kids and very good for our district. We're looking to do that here, and again, K to 12. I think the importance of, of serving our community is, can start as early as kindergarten, and should be a lifelong journey, so thank you for the time to explain that.
Absolutely, thank you for sharing. And another thing I wanted to point out that was discussed in the meeting, Mr. Anspach was sharing some of the challenges that they've been facing with regard to our student athletes and transportation. And so many things are just so far-reaching with regard to the impact of COVID, and, and how these things are organized in such a, an urgent nature, sometimes, just to put them together to make it so for the kids. So, let's see here, he had shared a number of slides. Forgive me. I have this public speaking thing, and I'm still not over it, so I have to go back and read. Okay, he recognized the effort of Mr. Brian Clayton from CMD Transportation, on how he consistently goes above and beyond the call of duty to ensure that students are transported to and from school, and to their after-school events, even so far as driving himself to make sure events are held. And I don't know if, is Mr. Anspach here? Would you like to speak on that at all? Sorry, Mr. Anspach.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. So, just like in anything right now, there's a shortage in workers. So, within our league, within District One, there's a shortage in, in drivers, not a shortage in buses. So, Mr. Clayton, you know, for our students, K through 12 academically, but co-curricular, has gone above and beyond to get transportation for our kids, and, you know, it's part of the puzzle of how we're getting our kids there, how we're getting them home, and sometimes, you know, it's, it's, we got to leave at 2 o'clock or 1:45, so the bus can drop off the kids at Upper Perk to get them to come back to do our PM run. So it's, there's a lot of communication, but his number one goal is to do everything we can so our students do not lose any acad- or any athletic competitions, even to the point, and I'll share this, Pots Grove doesn't pay for this, the other school districts do, but there has been several times where we've used our company to go and pick up other schools, to bring them to us, so we can get them in our cafeteria for 20, 30 minutes, so we can play that 3:45 game, and then those schools are billed, but we're able to compete. If we didn't do that, we'd be losing games. So, just one of the challenges we're facing, Mrs. McIntyre also bring up officials, there's a shortage of officials in, in some of our sports too, so we have had to be creative and play back-to-back games. We've had to play Saturdays, we've had to play on different days, and we're learning this stuff pretty much, yeah, two hours before a game. So we're making adjustments right before, which is sometimes a challenge, but we're doing our best, at the end of the day, to get our kids the opportunities to compete, so, thank you.
Thanks for coming up here to share that. I knew that there was a lot that we weren't able to capture in the notes, and it was so important to be able to share the extent to which Mr. Clayton's going, as well as you all in the Athletic Department, to make sure that these things come together for the kids. And then the last item we touched on was, it actually would have transpired last night, the first meeting of the Pots Grove Education Foundation, and so of those programs, teacher mini-grant applications will be sent to staff for the first week of October to continue many initiatives that teachers generate that are not able to be funded by regular district budget. So these are things that fall outside the budget. And they've secured some grants from the First Presbyterian Church of Pottstown and Unives Bank. So we're extremely grateful for that, so that these, these extra things can take place for the kids, so, thank you.
Thank you, anybody have any comments or questions? All right, we're going to move to the next report for curriculum, 8.3.
All right, the Curriculum Committee met September 21st. In addition to the committee members that were there, we also had the High School English Department, because we are currently going through a high school English curriculum renewal period. So basically, what happened there is the department met every Wednesday from February through May of 2021 to go over the current curriculum and how it could be changed and upgraded. They developed what they called non-negotiables, and those were the most important pieces that they absolutely couldn't live without. And then they use those to evaluate the existing programming and look at potential, potential new resources. So the two that they ultimately chose was Study Sync, and that is for ninth grade academic English and special education, 10th grade academic English and special education, 11th grade academic English, honors English and special education, and 12th grade academic English technical writing and special education. The other curriculum that they are choosing is Bedford, Freeman, and Worth, and that is for grade nine honors, grade 10 honors, grade 11 AP Lit, AP Language, and grade 12 AP Lit. The cost will be, as of right now, one, almost 100, 6,000, somewhere in there, but that will probably be reduced once they sort of negotiate. Those costs were budgeted into the Curriculum Department budget. And then professional learning has been developed to support the department's future work, to include training on the new resources and unit and assessment development. All grades K through eight will begin the curriculum renewal process for reading, English, English and language arts throughout the 2021, 2022 school year, and the recommendations will be made in 2022, and then they will be implemented in the 2022, 2023 school year. And then math curriculum will begin the new renewal process in 2022, 2023 school year, and the implementation will be in the 2023, 2024 school year. The next thing we talked about was an assessment audit, and that was basically to assess the, some of the programs that we use to assess the progress of the students throughout the years. And all teachers were used to gather information throughout the spring of 2021, and some of the recommendations are to eliminate the MAP program that we use currently, and decrease the use of the FMP benchmark assessment that is used for assessing reading levels. And we're going to continue to use Otis Lennon and Ames Webb, engage in reading and math K through five. And we're going to move toward the implementation of classroom diagnostic tools for grades six through eight in English. And we do want to eliminate Study Island, and we want to implement the use of Exact Path, which is a tool for differentiated instruction, and the total cost of that would be $46,401, but that will be covered by the American Rescue Plan funding for, through 2021 through 2024 school years, and so it will not hurt the budget. We will also be saving some money because we will be eliminating the MAP. Next, we talked about data review, which basically was a very quick conversation because there's very little data to review right now. And actually, the state of Pennsylvania all but told us to not look at PSSA numbers this, from last year, because, you know, they, they were pretty unpredictable all around. So next, in October, we're going to speak about personal finance class and continued data review, because we will get some SAT scores back, and then we're also going to talk about Schoology and Power School, and just how to, just sort of take a look at it, and to just understand it a little better and how it's used. And that was that.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much, Ashley. Anybody have any questions or comments on the curriculum? All right, with none, we're gonna move to new business, 9.1, Dr. Finerty.
Item 9.1. It is Board Vacancy. Board President, Mr. Robert Lindgren, has tendered his resignation from Pots Grove School District Board of Directors effective September 28th, 2021.
If I might, the board has several choices to make, and you can do it in separate motions, one motion. The items we have to discuss tonight are filling the vacancy, and we have a process we can go through, and you can direct Dr. Finerty or the administration to start that process. There's a reality here, of course, which is we're down to a couple meetings. And so, do you wait for the election and just let it be, so to speak? That's your call to make. And not directly related to that, but because of Mr. Lindgren's resignation, you can also tonight fill the position of Board President. If we don't, Al will continue to proceed over the meetings. If you do fill that seat and there's an opening as another board officer, we'll also have to fill that seat. In other words, for example, I don't know what's gonna happen, but if they were to make Mr. Leach the president, well, then we have to fill the vice president's seat. You can do that in one motion, as far as I'm concerned. But, so there, let me go through that again, I apologize. We have to deal with how we're gonna fill the seat, and we have to deal with, if at all, and we may not do anything, and whether you're gonna fill the vacant officer seat that Mr. Lindgren left. And again, you can do something or nothing, and that may necessitate another election for another officer. Does anybody have any questions? I don't know if I made any sense. I'm a little flummoxed. I lost my first pair of glasses tonight, and so I can't see a darn thing with these. I apologize.
Just a question.
Sure.
Since Mr. Leach was already vice president, doesn't he automatically become president?
It's not. No, the office of president, good question, that's what I'm trying to articulate, I apologize. The office of president is now open. Until that's filled, Mr. Leach presides because the school code says, in the absence of the president, the vice president presides. And that's what's happening tonight.
For the remainder of Mr. Lindgren's unexpired term?
Well, I mean, or you could fill the unexpired term, and that's why I'm suggesting...
Well, we're filling the unexpired term, but...
Well, there's two terms he has. He has a term until December to reorganization as president after his board seat. Maybe I'm confusing the issue because they're separate, but you have the issue of filling Mr. Lindgren's school board term, and I'm saying, you know, you have a choice to follow your policy, or you can do nothing because, you know, there is clearly an issue. I don't wanna set board policy, but we're down to two meetings, so you may wanna wait for the election to decide that. That's your call. And then whatever you do there, you have to consider whether you're gonna fill the remainder of his term as president. If you don't, Mr. Leach will continue to preside. Did I get it right this time?
So, then as far as the election goes, there's only one person running that isn't currently already on the board. So, we already know who the person will be filling Bob's position is. And there's...
It's not legal, but it wouldn't be illogical to appoint that person.
Okay, all right.
Certainly, it's something that...
So, it would not be legal, or it would not be...
It'd be illogical.
So, can I, would it make everybody more comfortable to make a motion to have Al officially as president? And then, and then motion, and then put in a vice president also, or are we good with just...
Well, you could do that, you could do that in one motion or two separate motions. So, that's, again, your call.
I would just like to make sure that everybody's on board. You know, Jay, you said you didn't really have enough time to think about it. Are you comfortable with this? Okay, good. Just wanna make sure everybody's comfortable.
All right, then I'd like to make a motion to, for Mr. Al Leach to, do I just say, be president, take Mr. Lindgren's position as president?
And that would be until our reorganization in December.
Right, until the reorganization, and have Tina, Ms. Tina McIntyre, as vice president.
So, she would step up, or not step up, would fill Al's spot then?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions?
Nope, I seconded it, so I don't have a question.
Okay, now we gotta open it up.
Because this is a new...
First of all, it was on the agenda, so I don't think we have to amend the agenda. The discussion was on the agenda, so we just opened it up to public comment.
Because we made, we're gonna make a new vote, if anybody has any public comment in regards to this particular agenda item, you're more than welcome to speak. Just, come up, come up, come up here. Yeah, just please come up and just please state your name, township, so we can put it on the record.
Brian Knox. I live in Lower Pots Grove, okay?
Thank you.
All my kids go to one of your schools. So, why is it your president, did he stand down? Did he have some medical?
He moved.
He moved.
He moved.
Different job.
Bob took a position in Virginia, and so when he moved, he put in for his resignation.
And who are you, exactly?
I'm the district solicitor.
Because it seems like you're the one really, like, it seems very unorganized here, to be quite honest with you. All right, it seems like, you know...
Look, we are limited. The board has, at my direction, not discussed this outside of the public meeting because it would not be legal. And so, if we appear disorganized, I apologize, but we're doing it as we're supposed to do it, in the public, in the sunshine, with full transparency. That's not always pretty.
Any other comments? All right.
Okay, let's be safe because there's a new addition to the sunshine law, and even though it's on the agenda, since we made it an action item, why don't we first have a motion to reset the agenda to include that vote? I mean, the new sunshine law is very cumbersome. It requires, if you're gonna reset your agenda, that you have to have a vote first to do that, then vote on a motion.
Mr. Davis, before that, can we just double-check that there's no public comment specific to this agenda item on Zoom? Thank you, Dr. Armitage.
Hello?
Can you please state your name and the township in which you live?
Joe Vecchio, Lower Pots Grove. I just wanted to know what the procedure is for me to assume the position of Mr. Lindgren on the board, not as president, but just to start to get my foot in the door, I guess, to be part of the board, what the procedure is.
That's, that's gonna be next, Joe. That's next. That's right after this, we're gonna go to that.
Thank you very much. I apologize for buttoning. Just wanted to know.
Not at all.
Dr. Armitage, any other public comment? Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna make, you have a motion in place. All those in favor?
No, we need to amend.
Right, we have to, we have to actually vote to amend the agenda. All right, do we have to put a motion for that?
You have one already.
We have a motion. Okay, we have a motion to change the agenda. Is everybody in favor of that?
Aye.
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 Any, any against? Passes. Next motion.
Now, we vote on the change of the agenda.
Now, we're voting on the change of the agenda. It would make me as the standing president only until the reorganization, and Tina as the vice until the reorganization. Is anybody on that? All of us in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed to that? Nay. Thank you very much. Welcome, Tina.
Tina, now you have to move.
Now you gotta move. You gotta sit there. Front camera.
Now Tina has vices.
All right, do we have any other new business? Oh, wait, we're gonna finish the, now for Joe Vecchio. Okay, so this is gonna be open to comment first from the board. I want the board to decide, what do you guys want to do? Do you want to fill the seat? Do you wanna wait?
And if you wanna fill the seat, you have a policy, you'll have to start the process.
Correct.
That answers Mr. Vecchio's question.
We cannot automatically just say Joe is in. We have a policy in place that means we must give, I think it's two weeks, if I understand correctly, it's two weeks of resumes sent. After that, we have to have a public meeting where we ask those that applied questions, and then we will vote on who we will take on the position.
Let me make it more confusing. You could waive the policy and do it next meeting, if you wanna waive your policy. I presume, and I wanna look, I don't know, I presume there's probably a provision where you can waive your policy. Usually, it's, well, usually there's a...
The whole point of a policy is to not waive the policy.
What's that?
I thought the whole point of a policy is to not waive the policy.
We had that issue before. Remember when we were bringing other people in? We all, that's why we created that policy, so we didn't do just, hey, we're at the meeting, we're just gonna nominate this person, that person is in. We didn't, that's why we created that policy. So, my preference, and of course, this is up to the board's comment, is to stick with the policy, or don't bring anybody in. It's the board's decision.
I would prefer to stick with the policy is my preference.
I would prefer to just keep it as it is right now and just wait, since it's just two meetings. It doesn't seem to make sense to, to go through all that, for basically by then it would be one meeting, correct?
If the policy is to bring applications, applicants in, and go through all the resumes, and have interviews for people that, knowing that they would only be on, if they did get elected in or voted in, it would only be for two meetings because then the election would run and Joe would be the next person on. It's sort of, you know, really, is it worth the effort for somebody to go through all that for two meetings? I don't know, you just, other people's thoughts.
Can, can you hear me on Zoom?
Yes. Good voice from beyond.
All right, if you can hear me, sorry, I'm off video. I'm in the dark, literally. My power is out here. So, my suggestion, Jim, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear everything you were saying. I think it's similar, is we have a policy for a reason, and I believe, I know it's kinda odd because there's only a couple meetings left, but I think we need to follow that policy that we advertise with people understanding it's only for the next, you know, till December, and then whoever applies, applies, and we go from there.
And I agree with you, Bill.
Do we have any other comments?
Do I need to make a motion?
Well, I mean, you don't have to do any motion. Absent a motion, you can do a motion, certainly, if you wanna clarify. Absent a motion, the administration will follow the policy.
Okay, so recap is, right now, it looks like the majority of the board would prefer to follow the policy, which would mean that we will open up the board seat for resumes to be supplied. That will be two weeks. Then our second meeting in October would be when we would interview those that are sitting there first, seat that person, then start the regular board meeting. We would have one additional board meeting in November, and then the reorganization in beginning of December. That's what I'm recapping as, and I believe that's what everybody is looking forward to. Is I correct?
Yes.
Just a minor point, any additional special meetings, the prospective candidate would be expected to show up?
Yes, they would have to show up. They would have to show in person to do the board meeting. All right, so we're gonna go follow the, so Joe, I'm hoping you can hear me, it's, you're gonna be needed to send in your resume. You got two weeks, send it in, and then figure that the October 2nd, October meeting, which I believe is the 26th, if I'm understanding correctly, I believe it's the 26th, that's the meeting that we're gonna do the interviews. And then we'll sit, obviously, whomever the board decides to vote on, and then that person will run the, with the meetings for the October meeting, and of course, the November meeting. After that, it's gonna go to the election.
So, I just, a point of clarification. So, the relevant policy that we're talking about is policy four, and I did provide snip of the relevant part of that policy in board docs for board members to review. What I'm hearing is you're directing us to post on the district website, ask for a response two weeks, within two weeks of today. Are we advertising for a special meeting or not?
My personal preference is to have it at the regular scheduled board meeting, which is the second meeting in October. It falls, I believe, under the 30-day window, so that would fit.
You might, you might wanna start about...
Yeah, we would start an hour early or something.
You might not even need that much.
The committee meetings that week? Yeah, that's true.
Well, you know, we'll see how many applications we get. It might only be, you know, a necessity of 15 minutes, or maybe you could even do it during your regular meeting. I was just suggesting you start a little early because you may have interviews and, you know, it takes time.
Al, did you say it has to take place prior to 30 days, right?
Yes.
So, the October 26th meeting is, is just outside of that. If, unless we're...
It's the 28th, right? 28, 30 days, isn't that covered as 26?
So, it's not the 24th, it's the 28th that we're moving from?
The 28th is when I got it.
Okay.
Right? Are we doing the 28th or the 24th of the resignation?
So, on the new business, it says, accepting Mr. Lindgren's resignation effective tonight.
Okay, okay. Then yes, absolutely, it's fine. Yeah. That's what I wanted to clarify because I didn't wanna fall outside.
When Bob originally stated, he said he was going to resign on the 24th. However, we still have to vote to accept it. So, we're not accepting it till tonight, so therefore it's 30 days from tonight. So, the 26th will fit in our 30 days. So, you only have the 26th meeting and the November 9th meeting. Yeah, of course.
Mr. Vecchio?
So, yes, so is it a, is it a resume or just a letter of intent that I want to apply for that position?
So, the posting will read that interested candidates will need to submit a letter of interest and a resume to the board president.
Okay. I, I will, I guess then I submit that to Mr. Al Leach.
To the attention of Dr. Finerty at the district office, or whoever he designates on the website.
Well, you just said, you just said the board president. Al was just voted board president. My thoughts are I would send it to Al Leach.
Joe, yeah, you would send it to the, Joe, send, address it to me as the board president, but send it to the district office under Dr. Finerty.
Okeydoke. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? All right, so we're gonna move on for that next new business. Do we have any new business from the board? Patty?
Yes.
Give me one second. I'll go, I'll go to you. It's at your Zoom, Bill. I'll go to you last.
Yeah, that's fine.
With that said, with Mr. Lindgren resigning, he's also part of the JOC. And I would like to have Jay, who has talked about coming onto the JOC, we can reorg in December, but just to have that extra Pots Grove body there is what we should, we need.
Did you ask him first?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was a month ago, but, yeah.
The only thing I would appreciate, if we could possibly table that, the reason being is that's an elected item, position, being part of the JOC.
Appointed position.
Appointed position, and then we have to change the agenda again, and we have to go through all the things.
We would just do, it's a reorg in December, wouldn't we?
I mean, how many more meetings do we have for the JOC?
We have two more.
No, we don't even meet this, there's one month we don't even meet.
October, November, and December.
We don't meet in December.
I'm just concerned, because we're gonna have interviews, we have some things going on, and I just wanted another Pots Grove body there.
Well, let's put it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay, you got it.
And that way, we can be clear. I always like to make sure the minutes reflect the exact term the person's filling. I don't wanna shoot from the hip, and I wanna know when Bob's term ends, or whether it's this December, or whether it's two year, or a year.
Okay.
So we put that in the agenda item, next meeting?
Yeah, I just think it'd be in the best interest of Pots Grove.
And that way, every person in the board then can actually consider if they wanna be part of the JOC.
That's right. Except for Ashley has a term, right?
Ashley's there right now.
Yeah, she has a term.
And your term.
There are one, two, or three-year terms, and I don't know off the top of my head where Bob was and is, and that's why I said I wanna make sure we get that right.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll get that information, and we'll put it down as new business for the October meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else? Tina?
No.
Jay?
Yeah.
Dr. Nippert?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yeah.
Ashley?
I already did.
All right, Bob, Bill, you're up.
All right. Well, first of all, congratulations to Mr. Leach, and to Alan, to Tina. I think the two perfect people are in the perfect spots. I think you both deserve and will do an excellent job in your leadership roles. I'm trying to read my notes in the dark here, so a couple of things. One, I wanna give a shout out, try to do this at least once a year, to our PTAs and PTSA at the high school, and just a little kinda commercial announcements, announcement, they do a lot of great things in the school. I encourage parents, parents to get involved in one way or another, and the PTA, PTSA is a great way to, thank you to Dr. Finerty. The S.A., because they include the students in their group, they run the concession stand at the football games, and they were very short in help. I was asked to attend, but I was nowhere near town, and I texted Dr. Finerty at the very last minute and asked if he would be able to go up, and he did, and he was very much appreciated. So thank you, Dr. Finerty. Before I go to my next point, anybody want to add or say anything about PTA before I move on? All right. My other thing is, we had received some, I guess, emails regarding BSCs, behavior specialists, being allowed in the schools, other, you know, groups are allowed in, as far as student teachers and that kinda thing. And there was some concern, because BSCs, mobile therapists, wraparound staff do provide a service to our students. And I raised that question via email. I did say I'd bring it up at the public board meeting, so we can have a public discussion on it. Dr. Finerty did email back some very valuable information, so I don't know if he wants to share any of that publicly, and then if anybody else has any thoughts on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. So we do, our health and safety plan does currently limit the number of adult visitors that we have allowed into our school, and we do this to provide spacing and take advantage of the student mask and distance exception. The, while the BSCs and TSSs and other support staff are valuable, and I'm not suggesting otherwise, they, they do support generally one student, a single student, and bringing multiple extra adults into a classroom is something that we, at this point, with the possibility of having to exclude students or additional students, is not something that we see as worth doing at this point. Remember, the student mask exception only applies to student to student. If an adult is positive, and we have to exclude people because of a positive adult, it would be six feet, and that would probably be excluding somewhere between three and 12 kids for up to 10 days in a classroom, and that's, that's a big risk. So that, we'll, we'll reevaluate what that looks like down the road. The other thing that we, that we actually do also value, and at this point have made the decision to not integrate back into our schools, are parent volunteers. Parent volunteers at the, at the elementary schools are huge assets, and they, they help not just one student, but many students, and that's something that we really do see the value and would very much like to get back to that. It's just at this point, with this level of transmission, that we're not ready to commit to opening that back up.
Thank you for that, and of course, safety is, is a top concern, and I'm gonna come back to that in a moment with another issue, but can you assure the board that, you know, wraparound does provide a significant service to our students behaviorally, for those with behavior challenges and emotional challenges? Are those needs being addressed efficiently?
It's critically important, and I know I speak for Dr. Pacito and her team, that we are making sure that we are supporting our students, whether they're IEP 504, but identified students, making sure that we're meeting their needs, and if you have concerns about that, I would strongly recommend asking for a meeting, and whether you're talking with your student's case manager, or you're talking with a smaller IEP team or the full IEP team, we absolutely wanna make sure that we are supporting students in their learning journey.
All right. Thank you for that. If we haven't already, I would encourage Dr. Pacito and her team to reach out directly to any families affected by this, in other words, that are having services from an outside agency not being able to continue at this point, and just advise them of why, and if they're having concerns that something is lacking, you know, how, what to do about that, to request that meeting. So if we can do that. I have one more point, but before I move on, did anybody else wanna add anything to that conversation? All right. So my last point, kinda, you kinda, we kinda segued into it. This is a board, thank God, that is very concerned about the safety of its staff and of its students and those in the buildings. We have been very much on top of things, following the advice of the medical experts, and we're gonna, I believe, continue to do that. And with that in mind, you know, this is a continuing, evolving virus, a pandemic, and, you know, now, thank God, we have this vaccine that's available. We had discussed at some point, I don't know where we concluded, but I'd like to come back to the discussion and, and then make a motion at some point tonight, that we require testing of any staff, weekly testing of any staff that are not vaccinated. But I don't like making a motion without chance for discussion. Is there any support, any thoughts either way on that issue?
Let me just, let me just say that certainly if the board wants to explore that, we're pleased to do that. We should prepare the appropriate resolution, get ready for the appropriate meet and discuss with the bargaining units, and I would not suggest you do a motion tonight, certainly, if you wanna have a discussion and direct the administration to start that process. That's your privilege and your decision.
Do we have comments from anybody on their feelings on the assurance testings being required for our teachers?
Mr. Parker, did you say, was it for unvaccinated staff?
Yes, just unvaccinated staff too. I believe it's most agencies, I know the school I'm at now, it's, it's weekly testing, but basically, I'd be looking to, you know, for, at the direction of the health department and so forth, but I believe it's weekly testing that's suggested for those that are not vaccinated.
I think if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Finerty, you reported out that that number was very marginal, the number of staff that would fall into that category.
Yes, we did survey staff, just to get a picture of the capacity that we would need to do, and let me back up. The Montgomery County Office of Public Health's current guidance does have recommendations in there for a testing program, so we did, as a matter of scale, ask our employees, our staff, to respond to a simple question, vaccinated or not vaccinated, or they could elect not to answer, to try to get a feel for what kinda staff, what kinda testing supplies we would need if we had to go that route. And we did, certainly in the, the teaching ranks, got very high response. I think we were 80, more than that, I think we're 90-some percent vaccinated at the teaching level. Some other staff that, that, there were, I can't, I don't have the answer for clerical staff or support staff or anything like that, but as far as the teaching ranks, very highly vaccinated.
Any other comments?
I think it would be prudent to find out about doing that. I mean, I would like to hear some input from the unions and from the aides, and not just from the teachers, you know, the teachers union, but from the other unions and the staff, just to see what they have to say about that as well. I mean, if we're talking about a hand for two, it may be a very simple thing, where they're like, yes, no problem, or if there's a lot of pushback, try to get some sort of feel from them, what they, their thoughts, you know, I don't know if there's a reason why they're not vaccinated, but...
The mic's not on.
I think it is. The light's on. Yeah.
Okay.
So...
No, it's not.
Yeah, he's on, I can hear him.
Oh, okay.
So, but I would like to, you know, I think it's something we should pursue, I think it's, you know, at least start asking the questions, just to see, you know, to start the conversation.
Dr. Nippert?
Yeah, along with that, we ought to start asking about booster shots. I know I had a J&amp;J shot back in March, and that means I'm probably going to need a booster shot. So there's a larger question here. What are we going to do, not just about a very small number of people who may not have had shots, but a fairly substantial group who may be eligible for booster shots? The president just had a booster shot today.
Any other questions? Comments?
I would be also in favor of, you know, moving forward to speak with the collective bargaining units about this, and just see where we stand. So I'm all for it.
All right. So what I'm hearing is, unless someone has additional comments, that we seem to have a majority of the board feel that it is something we want to pursue more discussion on, as in to, one, bring in our bargaining units and making sure that, get their opinions on their feelings of whether or not we are going to mandate or not mandate the assurance testings, whether it be weekly, bi-weekly, however it may be, and obviously, are we going to open this up to whether the person, the people are either vaccinated, not vaccinated, or they just didn't answer the question, because you could still be vaccinated, just, but they didn't wanna answer the question. There's nothing wrong with that. I know a lot of people that are vaccinated, but sit there and say, it's my personal business, I'm not gonna answer that question. That's quite a right too. I don't, it's up to the individual on what their personal opinions are on that. So, so from what I understand, we'd like to maybe possibly put this up for discussion with other units to make sure that we're covering everybody. Obviously, we're not gonna be making a vote tonight, or a motion. I wouldn't recommend making a motion tonight, because we obviously have much more discussion, but put this on our agenda to discuss, and the appropriate people to discuss with next meeting.
I want to, if I could, just clarify the direction for the administration. So are we looking to prepare a draft, a draft order and set up meet and discuss with our two bargaining?
I sense you're not quite there yet, or I sense the consensus is, first, take their temperature, and ultimately, if we decide to go forward, we would come back with a, you called an order, I called a resolution. We can discuss that language, but we'd come back with some formal motion, but I, I think that probably what the president just said, he'd like to have you do some preliminary work, then get back to the board, and the board would discuss it further.
Okay.
I don't know if you wanna do it at a committee meeting or not, that's up to you.
I don't know what committee meeting we would have, that personnel, we don't meet as a personnel committee.
If you aim for the first meeting in October, you know, to start having some, I don't know if that's enough time, honestly, but, I mean, you would know better than us if there'd be enough time to, you know, at least come back to say, we were able to get some conversations started, you know, so that maybe by, you know, second, end of October, we'd be able to make a decision, or the beginning of November, you, you would have a better idea of how long it would take to start having the conversations. I mean, I really don't know.
Do we have, do we have a personnel committee?
We do, we do, but it's an ad hoc committee, and the personnel committee generally has only been to bring on administrators. So we have never met as a full committee, except to bring on superintendent, vice principals, principals, and such like that. So I would say, since we don't have set committees, and we would like to get this probably resolved before flu season really kicks in, try to see if we can get it in the next couple of Bill, did you have anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna open the public comment. Now, I do have two here, but I saw you raise your hand, and I know you have a particular item, so why don't you come aboard, state your name, township, and of course, your public comment. Now remember, you have two minutes, so please try to stay within the two minutes, otherwise we're gonna say no.
Hello, my name is Jeanette Clifton, and I am in Lower Pots Grove. I have two children going to this school, to high school. Now, my problem is with the BSCs and the TSSs and the NTs, there are children that need help. I have tried contacting Mrs. Pacito, and she doesn't really respond. She passes the buck, as the term goes, and I'm trying to figure out, who do I need to talk to to find out why can't my children have their TSS, or their BSC, or MT? I mean, it's just very frustrating. I've been fighting this fight for over a year, trying to get them in. There has to be a way to work together, rather than just dismiss the issue.
I understand, Dr. Finerty's gonna...
I'd be happy if you contact me, maybe we can meet after the meeting, and we can set up a time to talk about it.
That would be nice.
Okay.
All right.
I also wanted to make another quick comment, okay, about the teachers getting tested, okay? What's next, the students? I mean, when is this insanity going to stop? I mean, we live in a world, it's not sterile, there's going to be colds, there's going to be the flu. COVID is no worse than the regular flu. It is for the elderly, but not for children. You don't know...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was muted.
Yeah. That was rude.
Disrespectful.
All right, all right, all right, all right, all right, all right. I want you to finish your comment. Go ahead and finish your comment. I want that taken care of for you.
Do you think that every teacher wants to have a test all the time? I don't think so. Most of them are scared they're gonna lose their job, okay? It's a bullying move.
I understand. All right, so I have two, we're gonna go. Andy Korman.
Andy had the lead.
Andy left? All right. We got Dustin Titello. Obviously, you know the deal, please state your name and everything like that. Please state your name and everything like that.
My name is.
The only thing I'm going to ask you is to keep the mask on.
You're not going to be able to hear me correctly, I need to speak clearly.
If you're going to wear a mask, that's.
A paper mache that blocks better than your guy's mask? That's fine. It's Dustin Datillo, Lower Pots Grove. It's D-A-T-T-I-L-O, because I know the fact checkers in Pots Grove, the vigorous fact checkers, got my name spelled wrong every time. So thank you guys for splitting the community like you have with this decision of not optioning the mask. People called me all types of names on the Pots Grove Mercury. My kids all types of names too, so thanks for that. So I'm just going to clear the air right now. My senior's on the varsity field hockey team, she's a honor society, since she's a junior, straight A, she volunteers multiple other clubs, she has a car, license, and a full-time job. My two boys in middle school play deck hockey. They attend school every day, I don't think they've missed a school day. My son Julius has special needs, and yeah, he doesn't have anybody walking him around the school because COVID's so dangerous, even though nobody under the age of 52 has died in Pots Grove. Anyways, then my daughter, she's in sixth grade, she's a field hockey star, deck hockey star with boys, and she plays LPAA. Anyways, so stop trashing my kids. You want to trash me and my masking, optional, do that. Don't trash me as a bad parent or my kids. Anyways, let's move on to masking. Democrat Michigan Governor Whitmer, one of the harshest mandates in the entire country. You know she reversed her entire mask mandate for schools and her vaccine passports, guys? Does everybody know that? Can fact check me. Now, you guys are asking, probably because COVID just disappeared from Michigan? No. She got a budget proposal that bans health officials from forcing masking in schools. So it wasn't that the Department of Health declared that it was safe again, or COVID disappeared, it's she got a budget proposal. It's fake! How long are we going to go with this, guys? No one under 52 has died in Pots Grove. That's according to the Montgomery County website, that's the COVID data hub. They're going to play these games forever? They tested my work at Phoenix, we have 900 employees that aren't vaccinated that got tested. It's an absolute failure of a program. The first week, they didn't even send our tests out. It's a joke. Guys, keep following these rules too. Absolute joke. On that note, I'm going to leave because I'm not going to sit here and keep reading in my accident.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to, we have two people? First, let me get if anybody here. Did you want? Go ahead.
Again, my name is Ryan Knox, Lower Pots Grove, have four kids that come to this school. I just want you guys to think seriously about your decisions. I mean, you have been told by the state and our federal government, it's going to be up to the local counties and states. And you guys point back to them as far as what the CDC says or what our local government health, you know, health offices say. And like the gentleman before me, I looked at the data. No kid has been hospitalized, no kid has died. Now, there have been three kids, one zero-year-old, one-year-old, and a four-year-old early in the pandemic hospitalized. None of them died. The youngest person in Montgomery County was 25. If you look on the CDC site, it says that, what does it say here? It says that we have an 87% with the first vaccination and a 59% second. Now, does the vaccine work or not? And the people who haven't been on this list here, they don't want it or don't need it, like myself. I've had COVID, my whole family stayed home, two asymptomatic, all the other ones had symptoms. They said I wouldn't have antibodies. I've had antibodies in April, again, up they went in August, and I'm getting tested again tomorrow. I don't need a booster shot, okay? What I noticed here in all this data I'm trying to read, it's skewed. The percentages are wrong, the graphs are misleading, it's unknown. You don't even test and consider and quantify the people who've had it and have a natural immunity. But then you'll have newspapers come out and say, if I get a shot, even one, I got superhuman immunity. Moving the goalposts, you guys don't, you are supposed to represent us, you're supposed to serve this community, start doing that.
10 seconds.
Thank you. Is there anybody else before we go to the Zoom? I got everybody? All right, we're going to go to the Zoom. Dr. Ramich. Mr. Corman, he was listed first.
Go ahead, Mr. Corman, we should be able to hear you.
If he's not ready, we'll go to.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I thought I unmuted myself, I apologize. I'm driving right now, if there's anyone else who would like to go in front of me, that would be great, and I'll be ready in about 30 seconds.
All right, let's go to Mr. Dovacchio.
Yes, how you doing? Joe Dovacchio, Lower Pots Grove, once again. I would just like to commend the IT department for getting this meeting with great reception, great sound this time. Last meeting was an abomination, and I was critical then, so I'm going to give praise this meeting. It was absolutely a big, huge, 100% difference. So thank you for getting all the sound, technical difficulties straightened out. Thank you to all of you for getting it done. This meeting was held a lot better with sound and audio and Zoom this time, so thank you all.
Thank you, and definitely a big shout out to you, Gus. You guys did awesome. Is Mr. Corman available yet?
Yes, I'm available.
Go ahead.
Andrew Corman, Gilbertsville Road, Upper Pots Grove. Regarding the Health and Safety Plan, this is a cookie.
Mr. Corman, sir, did we lose you?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, how's that, better?
Yes.
All right, so Andrew Corman, Gilbertsville Road, Upper Pots Grove. I stand for truth, health, and freedom. Under the Health and Safety Plan, the plan that has been adopted is a cookie cutter plan that is a one-size-fits-all approach to continue to push the COVID agenda. Since we're in school, let's review some American history. As a teenager in 1751, George Washington contracted smallpox and luckily survived. Fast forward to 1776 during the Revolutionary War, 10,000 troops marched onto Quebec. It's estimated one-third to one-half of those troops perished to smallpox. John Adams is quoted as saying, "Smallpox is 10 times more terrible than the Britons, Canadians, and Indians together." Are you aware that for the past six years running, the mortality rate around the world has been the same? For the past 20 months, we have been living through the greatest fraud perpetrated on humanity. On January 12th, 2017, Tony Fauci is quoted as saying.
Mr. Corman, sir, we lost you again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right, I don't know how much more time I have. On October 18th, 2019, a simulation pandemic tabletop exercise in New York, New York, was conducted. Dr. Michael Flynn is quoted as saying, "We have not had to respond to so many health emergencies at once. This is the new normal." Well, wearing a mask in school is not normal, not at all. The disease was labeled caps, a novel coronavirus. How about that? A serious respiratory disease. They were suggesting vaccines, however, they won't be ready. Hmm, sounds interesting, sounds like something we just lived through. They could use antivirals.
10 seconds.
Anyway, you guys get my point. You guys are drinking the Kool-Aid, and here's my question to the board. Have you or will you receive money for each student to wear a mask?
Thank you, Mr. Corman, you have a great afternoon. Is there anybody else? Do we have anybody else on Zoom, anybody else here? Speak now, before we adjourn. Yes, please, come up. Please come up, no. If you could just state your name, obviously, and township.
Do I have to hold it? No, okay, good. My name is Tanya Taylor, I am in West Pots Grove, and I have a kindergartner who just started. I'm not going to debate the mask thing, but I did want to speak on behalf of you. The laughter that I guess Bill did, I thought was very unprofessional, and the burden to be professional falls on you guys. So I hope that, I hope that when this meeting is over, there can be some discussion going forward, because I had to walk over and apologize to her for that, because she didn't deserve that, no matter her opinion or what she said, and that's all I really wanted to say.
I totally understand, and I agree. Last call. All right, we'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second, I need a second. Second, adjourned. See you guys next time.